Good evening, welcome to the October 21st meeting of the Cumberland County Commissioners. At this time, I'll call on Commissioner Kenneth Edge for our invocation and pledge.
Would you stand please as we honor God and country? Let us pray. Most gracious and loving God, we thank you for our many blessings. We thank you that we live in a world where we are free to worship in the faith of our choice, where many in other places live in fear. We thank you for family and friends where many walk alone. We thank you for the opportunities and challenges that we face in our respective roles as commissioners. Help us in our efforts as we labor to make decisions that affect the people we serve. Help us to govern with clean hearts and a right spirit. We try not to neglect your call, but we are very much aware of your forgiving grace. Forgive what we have been, amend who we are, and direct who we shall yet become. Fashion us in your image and help us to do your will, in the name of the great Creator of life and beauty, we pray. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Commissioner Edge. I appreciate those words, as do all of us. At this time, I will, we have a public comment period that lasts for 15 minutes where citizens can come and comment about anything that's going on. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers.
Well, at this time, I'll open the public comment period and I will close the public comment period. The next item on our agenda is the recognition of some significant people in Cumberland County, and I'd like to call on Commissioner Billy King.
It's always a great pleasure to recognize our employees who have worked long and hard for the county and decided to retire. So my mission this evening is to recognize Zenovia Nash, Cumberland County Mental Health. Well, if any of you know her, tell that she was recognized tonight.[190.12][190.12](Laughter) Tell that Commissioner Billy King did a great job of saying a few words, and we're very grateful to her service.[201.12][201.12](Applause)
We're not used to such a big crowd. We didn't get to see everybody. Okay. Next item is, I'm gonna call on Commissioner Ed Melvin for another recognition.
Good evening. It's an honor tonight to recognize employees, as he just did, and also to recognize people that serve on boards and committees. Tonight, we're gonna recognize Marvin Rouse. Marvin, would you come up, please? Marvin served on the Department of Social Services Board for six years, three years as chairman. I also serve on the Social Services Board, and it was a great honor and a privilege to serve with Marvin Rouse. Marvin has been with, over the years, 32 and a half years with Department of Social Services, and he just, he taught me a lot. Thank you, Marvin. And we're gonna recognize him tonight with a letter of appreciation. County Cumberland Certificate of Appreciation presented to Marvin Rouse for outstanding dedication and service on the Social Services Board from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners dated this 21st day of October 2013, Jimmy Keith Chairman, Cumberland County Board of
You would think that I'm used to this after all those years, but at the same token, I consider it a privilege to be, I've been appointed to serve on the board. It's some very interesting work. At the same time, I wish I'd see some of my old friends from years. At the same token, let's say that every citizen, if you think about your community and you like your community, please join in and help.
At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Edge for some more recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. On behalf of our board, we have four people that are coming off of the Mental Health Area Board that are gonna be recognized tonight, and I would like to say that they're not coming off because of their choice. They're coming off because there was some legislation that changed in Raleigh, and we now are working under a managed care organization called the Alliance. But we do wanna recognize them for their service on our board and wish them well and hope that they will apply to get on one of our other boards. So this time, I would like for Liliana Parker to come forward. Come on up, Ms. Parker. Alejandra Vasquez, come on up. Ally Wiggins, is Ally here?
Yes.
Come on up, Ally. And Dr. Mary Hales, Mental Health Senator. As you can tell, this is a fine-looking group, and they have done a great job serving our community on the Mental Health Board for those people that are sometimes the most vulnerable in our community, that need help, and we're gonna continue to serve those people. We just served them in another venue. And so, this time, I'd like to present this certificate of appreciation to Liliana. And Mr. Vasquez.
And if you, if you'd like to say anything, feel free to say so.
I think that it is important for any citizen in the United States to serve to our community. And in my case, it is an honor to represent my community, as you can see with my southern accent.[529.47][529.47](Laughter) I represent the Latin American community. And it was an interesting experience because that shows me what is our community, the diversity, how important it is to be together to make our community move forward. Thank you very much.[552.30][552.30](Applause)
Thank you, everybody, for this award, but the award that we get is for all of us, not just for one person, you know, because we serve the community and the communities
Good evening. I thank the citizens for the privilege of serving. Thank you.[587.12][587.12](Applause)
Good evening. I'd like to thank the citizens, the county commissioners, and all those who had some involvement in my opportunity to serve on the board. It was certainly a privilege to be able to represent the consumers of the Mental Health Center, and I wish them all the best under the new service providers. Thank you.[615.41][615.41](Applause)
Good evening.
Good evening.
Since 2009, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has partnered with 4-H to educate youth about politics and government. Through this program, teenagers experience some of the highlights of being a county commissioner. This year, our Cumberland County Youth Delegate was Ruth Vorderbergie, and she is here this evening to report on her experience. I would like to thank each of you for the support and the continuing support you've given to 4-H for this program through NCACC.
Good evening. I am Ruthie Vorderbergie. I am 18 years old, and I am a senior at Massey Hill Classical High School. I've been 4-H for eight years, and I've had a lot of success with that organization, and I've learned a lot through that organization. And I was honored to be selected to represent Cumberland County at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference. While I was there, I attended numerous lectures from guest speakers. A couple of them were a public information consultant, some county employees, and actual county commissioners. I learned about their government jobs, the kind of duties they entailed, and I also got to attend a conference led by Will Allen, who is a famous urban farming guy from Milwaukee, Wisconsin. And last but not least, I attended the annual conference where I learned a lot about what you guys actually do as county commissioners. And my favorite part was going to a budget simulation where we were placed in groups, and we had to determine what areas to cut budget from. And I learned a lot about compromising and how if you have different viewpoints in a group, you still have to compromise to get things done. So, I did learn a lot about county government, and I have a newfound appreciation for what you guys do as Cumberland County Commissioners, and I have a newfound appreciation for our own county, because I personally think we are from the best county.
For those of you following the agenda, we have a change. Ms. Zenovia Nash is in the building.[861.62][861.62](Laughter) And we're gonna see if everything Commissioner King said that she would say is gonna be true.[868.00][868.00](Laughter) Zenovia, please come forward. Zenovia, I had a great speech I'll line up for you.[882.37][882.37](Laughter) But you're late, so you know, you just get, whatever I got goes, okay?
Zenovia Nash, Cumberland County Mental Health, in recognition of outstanding service to the citizens of Cumberland County, October 1, 1980, May 31, 1989, July 3, 1990, July 1, 2013. From the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, thank you very much for the service you have provided to citizens here in Cumberland County.
I've had a very enjoyable time working at the center. The 31 years have gone by fast. I can't believe it, and I've enjoyed working in eight different buildings with several different bosses and all different kinds of staff, and the children and adults, and I think that through all those years, you know, I think I've helped a whole lot of people, and hopefully they're doing better at this time. I really enjoyed my job, and I'm quite sorry that it's not now active at the Mental Health Center, but hopefully they will find the same services at a different location, but I've really enjoyed it. Being here, it was like family where I worked.
At this time, we've got item number one, which is approval of the agenda, and I call on Mr. Martin.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have several items that I would ask you to consider as adjustments to the agenda. I think in the order in which they appear, item 2G1 is a budget revision involving mental health services, and the amount listed in the budget amendment is $250,000. I would ask you to change that amount in the two places it's listed on the agenda to Next is item 3F. We have, item 3F is a minimum housing code enforcement case. I understand from Mr. Hatcher that a permit has been acquired to rehab the house, and so we'd ask you to remove it completely from the agenda. Item 3E, I'm sorry, I missed my alphabet here. Item 3E is a petition. We have a case P 1335 for rezoning request, and the petitioner has asked that that be deferred until the November 18th meeting. If you recall, it was deferred in September to tonight's meeting, and all the issues have not been resolved, and so the petitioner is requesting that you move it to November the 18th. And finally, on item 6E, which is nominations to...
Take your clarification, Mr. Martin.
Yes, sir.
Item 3F is still valid?
No, item 3F, item 3F needs to be removed from the agenda entirely.
And item 3E.
Item 3E, yes, deferred until November the 18th.
Okay. Thank you. Please.
Item 6E is an appointment to the Minimum Housing Appeals Board, and both of the nominees should be listed as reappointment. We only show one as a reappointment. Actually, the other one is a reappointment as well.
With those changes, I look for a motion. Some move.
Take it.
All right. Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you very much. Next item is our consent agenda.
Our motion approved. Second.
Motion has been made and approved. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay. We've got to item number three. First item, our public hearings. First item is case number P 13-38. I'll call on Mr. Lloyd.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, there's no opposition to this case. The planning board recommended approval, adopting the reasonable statement, to approve to R 40.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Any questions for Mr. Lloyd? Madam Chair, open the public hearing. Do we have speakers?
There are no speakers.
Then I will close the public hearing. Yes, Commissioner Faircall.
Chairman, make the motion that we approve the staff recommendation for the rezoning request.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Item 3B, case number P 13-39.
Yes, sir. Again, there's no opposition to this case, rezoning to C 2P. So the planning board recommended to adopt and approve the reasonable statement and find the request consistent with the land use plan and approve C 2P.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing.
There are no speakers.
Close the public hearing. Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we follow the planning board recommendation.
Second. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Item number 3C, case number P 13-42. Mr. Lloyd.
Yes, sir. Once again, there is no opposition to this case, so the planning board recommended to adopt and approve the reasonable statement and find the request consistent with the land use plan and approve the CP Plan Commercial District.
Okay. Now, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
There are no speakers.
We'll close. Motion?
Our motion approved. Second.
Thank you, Mr. King, Mr. Edge. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Next item. Before we go to the next item, can, do we have empty seats out here for anybody that may be in the other room? If you had an empty seat on your way, could you raise your hand? All right. Let's see if we can get everybody in here. If you have a seat beside you, can you raise your hand if you have a seat beside you? Okay, thank you. At this time, Mr. Lloyd, please.
Yes, sir. The next case is a rezoning of 978 acres from A1 agricultural to A1 conditional zoning, agricultural conditional zoning district for an outdoor firing range and agricultural uses or to a more restrictive zoning district. Subject property is shown in a hatch pattern. It is 978 acres. It's located on the south side of Highway 210, the Cedar Creek area. Current zoning in the area consists of C3 heavy commercial, A1 agricultural, and some small RR rural residential. Current land use in the area shows single-family housing in yellow, with SW designating single wides and DW double-wide manufactured homes. Commercial is shown in red, and 3 is Carolina repack, more of an industrial use. This is an aerial view of the subject property. Okay. That's hydrogydatic soils shown there in green. This is the surface danger zones of the property. Again, this is an outdoor firing range. I'll get into the amendment in a minute, but these zones on this slide show that no projectiles will leave the site. That's the furthest the projectiles are, well, projected to go. This is a more detail of the site, detailed view of the site plan. The multipurpose ranges are shown in C, D, and E. A long-range shooting is shown in B, and a pistol range shown there at the bottom. Just a brief history for you, then I'll read the planning board's recommendation, because part of this explanation is included in the recommendation. By now, you all have heard of this, of Tiger Swan. There's been two court cases to this point. You are asked to hear a rezoning. Any court case prior to this isn't to be considered. This is merely a rezoning that's based on an ordinance amendment that you all made back in June 17th. We didn't have outdoor firing ranges in the ordinance. We added them as a conditional use with many conditions. This hearing tonight is a petition to adopt this conditional zoning based on the conditions that were laid out in the amendment as of June 17th. If Tiger Swan meets these conditions that the board laid out, you have, you must approve these. I'd like to add that these are the most stringent, what you adopt are the most stringent conditions in the state for an outdoor firing range, the most stringent. So the results of tonight are this: if Tiger Swan's approved, they'll remain able to operate. If it's denied, they will cease operation.
Is it, were you finished, Mr. Lloyd?
I was finished, except for the planning board's recommendation.
Please move forward.
The planning board recommended to adopt and approve the reasonable statement, find the request consistent with the land use plan, and approve the A1 ZD for an outdoor firing range and agricultural uses with conditions.
Okay, those conditions?
The conditions are in your packet. There's many, many conditions. I would like to add that the planning board did add one condition in your packet, and I'll read this to you, would be condition number 26. At the October 1st, I might add that the amendment you made included that all Department of Energy conditions for outdoor firing ranges had to be met. Tiger Swan has met or exceeded those stringent conditions. The planning board added one more. The applicant agreed that normal daylight range hours shall be only conducted between the hours of 8:00 and 5:00. In addition, on no more than five days in each calendar month, the hours will extend to 10:00 PM for conducting night fire operations, provided that public notice is given of the extended hours at least 12 hours in advance. And the form by which public notice is provided shall be approved by, of course, the planning director. Under no circumstances shall range operations be conducted after 10:00 PM. It did come out the planning board, there is no request for any kind of helicopter pad or operations. If anything outside of the firing range is to be proposed, the applicants will have to come back in front of the planning board and then in front of you to have anything over and above the firing range approved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. At this time, I'll open up the commissioners. Have any questions for Mr. Lloyd or possibly Mr. Moorefield?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, there was something that you said, sir, and I don't know if I understood exactly what you were talking about. Whenever you said that we had approved the ordinance and we must approve this tonight, did you mean to say that?
No, I didn't say that. What I did say was, well, if I did, I'm wrong. Okay? What I did, what I meant to say was, you adopted and amended the ordinance to allow outdoor firing ranges as a conditional use and set forth many conditions. If Tiger Swan met the conditions that were included in your amendment, then they must be able to operate.
Oh, sir. Okay.
I'm sorry.
One more, sir.
Sure.
And so, we're clear on that, so it's not that we must approve. You just made a mistake in wording that.
I guess I did.
Okay. Also, when we were looking at the screen, I think I- Also, when we were looking at the screen, I think I heard you say that there was a pistol range, as well as another range, so we're looking at two ranges.